Get it.
Success. There you are. Yay. What the heck? Where'd it go? I'm gone.
No, you're still there.
Yeah, we can still see you.
We can see and hear you.
Okay, well, I can kind of get this started if that's okay with you.
Oh, yeah, whenever you're ready.
So this is the Virtual Common Council Meeting. Uh, we thank everyone for kind of joining. This is a Zoom meeting. We are unfortunately our YouTube stream is down tonight, so we are not on YouTube, but we are currently broadcasting through the Zoom app. Um, so for some reason I'm talking right now and you can't hear me. Uh, there is the call information on the actual agenda. Uh, there's also the web ID also on the actual agenda. Uh, this meeting will go slower than a typical common council meeting, so there'll be some legs. Uh, there'll be some roll call votes for every item. But it's just gonna go a little bit slower. So, uh, just a reminder to the common council, if you have something you want to say, there is that raise hand function, or if that doesn't work, just wave your hand from the screen and one of us will will find you. So that is gonna be the process tonight. And with that, I will stop talking.
Great. Um, I will, uh, just to make this official, uh, call the, uh, City of Verona Common Council Meeting for Monday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty, uh, to order at, uh, seven oh three, uh, PM. Uh, we'll begin with the roll. Oh, you're muted, Adam.
Try again, Ellen. There you go.
Yeah.
No, I've lost you.
I can hear, I can hear you now, Ellen.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes.
I can't see anyone, but okay. Um, Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Journey.
Here, here.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Cole.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Ricky.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present, and I can take a screenshot of everyone in case you need evidence.
Okay, uh, with that, we'll move on to item three, which is public comments. Um, I believe, uh, we're doing this a little bit differently this time, but I believe Mr. Sayer has a list of people from the public, uh, who will be called on to speak.
Okay, the first person is Ted Higgins. So Ted, I'm gonna promote you, or actually, I think I just love you. Well, I mean, Ted, I'm gonna promote you to a panelist, and once I promote you, I will let you know when I think you can talk and share your screen.
I lost you for a second, but I'm back.
Yep, hold on, we're getting there. Uh, oh, boy. I see you, Ted. There you are.
He's muted, though. Oh, there you go.
I'm good now.
All right, take it away.
Okay, you guys can see me? Oh, I can see myself. Okay, perfect. Okay, um, well, thanks for this opportunity and you guys being flexible. Um, no one's ever done a meeting like this before, and I think, um, even the item I'm speaking on tonight is something you've never had to consider before, which is that the, uh, sort of the pandemic leave, extra pandemic emergency leave for employees. It's it's new business item E for you guys. Um, just to see where we're at, um, the the city was, um, it's decided to exclude first responders in in, um, to the FF CRA, uh, which was fine, but then we did come back and I had discussions with them about, um, possibly adding some some leave for our first responders, and we did, and then negotiations just got kind of hung up on on the last issue here. We agreed to the terms, which would be, you know, if a person was, uh, had COVID nineteen, obviously, a family member, but also suspected because of this lack of testing that we have across the country, and certainly even in Dan County, the first responders is lack of testing. So we wanted that presumption to be in there because the the whole point of that is to not have to spread it around the firehouses and get get other firefighters and first responders sick. So, um, to that end, um, the number of hours then became called into question. Um, we proposed ninety-six hours. Our work week, as you know, in the fire department is forty-eight hours on average. So, um, the important part of the ninety-six versus, uh, the seventy-two, which is what was offered by the city, was it would only cover, um, three days, really, three shifts, three twenty-four hour shifts, which would equal eight calendar days for our guys. So that wouldn't, that wouldn't get them to the fourteen day quarantine they would need. Um, so our ask is that, uh, the council amend this to, um, ninety-six hours. Um, that would get us that fourth day. Um, I, on average, the way our, uh, fire department schedules work out, it's one on, two off. So there still might be where the employee falls a day or two that they'd still have, even if, even if you increase it to ninety-six, they're still gonna be on the hook for twenty-four to forty-eight hours potentially. Um, depends on their schedule, but, um, so that's, we're, we're just asking for a modest increase of twenty-four more hours to reflect that. The cops, um, the policy, the cops get eighty hours. Um, that covers their, I think they've, it's seventy-six hours a week for them over two weeks, so that would cover them. Um, and then Fitrona EMS, uh, their commission has agreed to, uh, ninety-six hours as well. They also work forty-eight hours a week, same station, obviously, is is the, uh, one of firefighters, same calls, and so we're really just looking for parity with that. So, um, now, how much I know the, uh, fears that I at least I kind of heard going around were like, you know, could this be possibly abused? And it's, no, it couldn't be abused. Obviously, you're, it's gonna have to be a COVID type of illness, and this is not something, you know, no one wants to use this leave, by the way. It doesn't, um, A, they want to keep it in case they do get sick or a family member, and that's obviously a very serious thing. Um, uh, we also have it in there that, you know, this isn't, you can't carry it over. There's no cash value if you don't use it, um, in a non precedent setting. It's really, you know, we're, we've never had to deal with anything like this before, you guys or us. So, um, we feel that, uh, sort of parity with the, uh, Fitrona EMS is what we're looking for, and we, and we could live with that. Um, payment wise, you know, it's one of those, it's a potential cost. Um, someday, maybe, hopefully, no one has to even use it, but, um, just keep in mind, the state, the feds have given the state of Wisconsin, um, one point, well, it's two point something, uh, billion dollars, and, uh, one point nine of it, um, the, the governor, governor's gonna get the dole out to municipalities exactly for these costs. So how, what that looks like, I know, is still kind of up in the air, whether it's an increase in shared revenue, or whether it's more of a grant type of thing for actual costs is up in the air, but the money will be there and come. So if there's any sort of fiscal, it would be a minor fiscal amount anyway, but all likelihood is it'll be covered either most or all of it by federal money. So, um, with that, I will, um, stop talking. You know, our position is just, our increase is just twenty-four hours more, and, uh, with that, I will either take any questions, or I can sign off.
Uh, any questions from the council? Hmm. Not seeing any, uh, hand raised. I don't see anyone waving at me. So, uh, Mr. Sayer, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Higgins, and, uh, Mr. Sayer, if you can move us on to the next speaker.
Thank you.
I'm gonna put you back down, I think.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Good. Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Matt Miller. Let me find Matt here. Matt, can you hear us?
I think so.
Do you have video or no?
Uh, I'm on my cellphone. So, uh, let's see. Hide my video. Not looking good.
We can hear your voice.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes.
All right, awesome. Um, I basically just wanted to speak to the same thing as, uh, Ted did. Um, we, uh, just asking for that extra twenty-four hours. Uh, we are in the same station as Fitrona, um, and, uh, you know, they're getting that, uh, ninety-six hours, and I would just ask that we could get that as well. We have a couple of, uh, newer employees that it could negatively impact if they, uh, were not able to come to work because of a COVID nineteen issue. Um, uh, you know, where they would need, not have enough sick time possibly to cover that. Um, but that's, that's really what I had. I'll keep it kind of short because I'm not real great at speaking like this. So, thank you for you guys' time, and, uh, it's interesting to watch a meeting like this. I hope we don't have to do this for very long.
Uh, me too. Uh, thank you. Now, did anyone have any questions, uh, from Mr. Miller? Seeing none. Uh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Sayer, were there any other, uh, public speakers?
Uh, no, I did have an email from Kevin German that I did send off to the council. Uh, if you want me to read that, I can, otherwise.
If you could, I think it was short.
All right. Good evening. My name is Kevin German, and I'm a career firefighter with the City of Verona. I write to you today concerning the emergency responder paid sick leave for the Verona Fire Department. We appreciate the city's effort to include the first responders into the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act. Unfortunately, under the city's proposed, under the city's proposed police, the firefighters would only receive seventy-two hours of paid leave, the equivalent of eight calendar days or three working days under their work schedule, while the city has agreed to give the police eighty hours, which covers the entirety of fourteen day quarantine in the event that they were instructed to do so. The city has also agreed to give FREMS paramedics ninety-six hours, which would cover them in the event that one of them was required to quarantine for fourteen days. The part-time firefighters are given time in accordance with an average of their time worked within a two-week period over the previous six months. The disparity amongst the ranks within the fire department itself and with FREMS is alarming. We are requesting to have the same MOU that was adopted by FREMS to be adopted for the firefighters as they work the same number of hours, go on the same calls, as well as live in the same building with every day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for reading that. Um, were there any other public comments?
No, there were not. Did we lose somebody? Did we lose somebody off this?
Um, we lost Heather's picture.
Okay, maybe that's it.
Oh, she's back.
Okay.
Okay, we still have Quorum, too. Um, with that, we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes from the March ninth, twenty twenty Common Council Meeting. Questions, comments, motions? Uh, Alder Cole.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
Uh, motion by Alder Cole, uh, seconded by Alder Touche.
Yes, please.
Any corrections? Uh, seeing none. Um, if a clerk would read the roll.
Alder Kemp.
Hi.
Alder Cole.
Hi.
Alder Posey.
Hi.
Alder Ricky.
Hi.
Alder Touche.
Hi.
Alder Cronin.
Hi.
Alder Journey.
Hi.
All right, that motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to item five, uh, mayor's business. Um, I know reading the roll for every item is kind of clunky, but, uh, we're kind of in new territory here, so I want to just make sure we have certainty, um, and and we'll, we'll read the, read the roll for everything except for adjournments. Um, the, uh, second thing I would like to talk about, uh, under mayor's business is just a general thank you to city staff for how smoothly the election ran. Um, there were a lot of other cities that that had trouble, and I, you know, without speaking to some of the challenges they made, I think, uh, Verona really came together. You know, whether it was, it was the, the, uh, city's effort in the election, uh, under the direction of the city clerk, um, whether it was the public works directors, you know, building the plexiglass shields, I think, I think everyone came together really, really well. I thought it was a smooth and and great process, and I really, really appreciate the efforts that went in to make sure that every vote was counted. So, thank you, Ellen, and thank you to everyone else. Um, that was all I had. We'll move on to item six, which is announcements. Um, any members of the council have any announcements? Alder Cole.
Just to piggyback off what you said, um, I just wanted to thank all the city employees in general for working during this whole pandemic, um, and making sure the city is running smoothly in all the different areas, even outside of the election. I know it's, it's tough being an essential employee, and, um, I, yeah, I just wanted to extend a thank you to everybody who's continuing to work, whether they're telecommuting or coming into work. Uh, however, you're making sure everything's running smoothly. It's really appreciated.
Uh, any other announcements? Seeing none. Uh, we will move on to item seven, the administrative report. Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. We haven't left too much tonight. Uh, we do have a council organizational meeting on April twenty-first. That's next Tuesday. Uh, we typically hold those at about six thirty PM. Um, if somebody has any feelings, strong feelings about the start time, uh, let myself know or let Ellen know, but that, that time could be adjusted slightly if if it works better for people. Uh, so the plan for that is six thirty, and we don't hear from people, that will be the plan going forward, and we'll most likely be doing that virtually, uh, on this Zoom app again. Um, I'll save my COVID nineteen updates for later on in the agenda. Could we do it? We do have an agenda item that specifically deals with that. Um, the district two vacant alder seat, we have pushed back the deadline for that. Uh, the deadline to submit for that is now Wednesday, April twenty-second. Um, and we basically pushed everything back about a month, uh, similar to, you know, just because of the, the safer at home order. Um, that depending on what happens, that could change again, but that is the plan. Um, our, our goal is to have in-person interviews actually before the council versus doing it virtually on Zoom. Um, but if if somebody has any strong feelings on that, I guess, let me know. We can, we can, once again, regroup on that and talk about it at a future council meeting, but the plan is right now to have those due on April twenty-second. We also pushed back the deadline for the Sugar Creek RFP. Uh, those are now due April twenty-seventh, and that's once again because of COVID nineteen. Uh, we did have some requests from developers asking us to push that back. Uh, they had concerns about their teams and meeting and collaborating together due to outbreak, and uh, they felt their collaboration would not be as, uh, done as well, just because they they have to do it by video chat versus in person. So we did move that back. And lastly, uh, the twenty-twenty census is still ongoing, so if people have not responded to that, I would encourage people to, uh, send those out. Uh, they were sent out by the federal, federal, federal government already. Uh, anyone who has not responded by, uh, for, by mail, excuse me, by, uh, phone or by, uh, online, uh, they'll be getting a reminder from the federal government to fill out that form. Um, it's important to note that, uh, we have an accurate count of the city's population. College students, uh, should fill out the form and use their college addresses. Uh, that's from the census, um, which is either on campus or off campus, even though they're at home during COVID nineteen. So if anyone has kids or knows of kids home for college, please remind them of that. And as of April eighth, we had a response rate of sixty-eight percent, and the state of Wisconsin had a rate of fifty-three point eight percent. So we are well in front of the state. So, uh, we're doing pretty good on the census. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any non-COVID nineteen related questions from the council.
Uh, any questions for Mr. Sayer? Hmm, seeing no one. Uh, thank you. We'll move on to item eight, uh, the engineers' report. Uh, Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. Um, so for the well six pumping station construction, the access road and driveway and parking area have been graded, and the base course is installed. HVAC items, ceiling doors, insulation and painting are being completed. Due to COVID nineteen protocols, only one trade will be able to work in the building at a time, and this is expected to push substantial completion back six to eight weeks. It may impact final completion as well. For the Verona area high school construction, traffic improvements, West Verona Avenue inside lanes are closed to the project area with concrete landscaping and electrical items to be completed. The lane closures are planned for a couple of weeks or so, and then lane closures will be shifted to the outside lanes. Western circle traffic will remain in the current location, and curb repairs and asphalt paving are planned in the next month. Once asphalt paving is complete, traffic will be switched onto the new lanes, which is the east side, and work will, and work on the west half will begin. Utilities will be completed in the next couple of weeks along Wildcat Way and Stewart Woods Road. Once complete, the areas will be prepped for the road base and curb and pavement will be placed. Work is beginning or planned to begin shortly on Nine Mound Road, north and south of West Verona Ave, Legion Street at Nine Mound Road, and Paoli Street at Nine Mound Road. Work will be taking place for the next month or so, and will consist of new turn lanes or median islands. All concrete has been poured for all structures. Some finishing items and rail railing placement remain at the Stewart Woods Road Bridge and are planned to be completed in the next couple of weeks. Military Ridge State Trail is planned to be closed at the end of the month to complete trail grading, concrete approach slabs, and final restoration. For the county highway M construction project, the contractor intends to start back up this week with remaining work consisting of placement of colored and stamped concrete pavements in the roadway medians at various locations along County Highway M, County Highway PD and Midtown Road. The contractor's crews will begin addressing various punch list activities, which are anticipated to occur throughout the project limits. For county highway PD construction from Woods Road to County Highway M, private utility installation is occurring. Roadwork has resumed with the placement of crushed aggregate base course on the future eastbound lanes. At this time, there are no anticipated changes, changes to the current traffic control. For Liberty Park Phase Four Construction, uh, work resumed last week. The storm sewer on Ambition Street has been installed. The contract, uh, contractor estimates a total of about two weeks of storm sewer work. Street construction will follow. Work on Whalen Road will be part of the street construction. There will be traffic control barrels set out during the week of, during this week. Um, and let's see, for the, there's going to be a rap- rapid rectangular flashing beacon project, and that project will consist of the installation of RRFBs at four intersections within the city listed below, North Main Street and St. Andrews Church driveway, North Nine Mound Road and Edward Street, South Nine Mound Road and Military Ridge State Trail, Whalen Road and Military Ridge Drive, and bids were received in March, and, um, the, the contract was, is recommended to be awarded, and that will be discussed later in the agenda today. Um, and then just a reminder that there's going to be, um, the asphalt rehabilitation project and chip seal projects are gonna be coming up here. Um, and those will start end of May or or middle of June, and we'll talk about those in future reports. So with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you. Uh, is there any questions on the, uh, engineers' report? Seeing none. Uh, we'll move on to item nine, which is committee reports. Uh, nine A, under the plan commission. I will turn it over to Alder Cole.
Thank you. Um, I'm making a motion to approve resolution number R dash twenty dash zero one three, approving a certified survey map to modify the shared property lot line between existing lots nine and ten of the Verona Technology Park Platte, located at the corner of Thousand Oaks Trail and John P. Lacy Boulevard.
Motion by Alder Cole, zero second. Uh, seconded by Alder Cronin, um, Alder Cole.
The proposed certified survey map would modify the shared property line between existing lots nine and ten on, of the Verona Technology Park. Comments from the Plan Commission meeting on April eighth, uh, twenty twenty included questions regarding when a site plan would go before the commission for this property, and is it typical to have a stormwater access agreement between two properties for a certified survey map? The Cook Plan Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval at this meeting.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, seeing none. Um, we will have the clerk, uh, read the roll, uh, regarding resolution number R dash two zero dash zero one three, approving a certified survey map to modify the shared property line between existing lots nine and ten of the Verona Technology Park Platte located at the corner of Thousand Oaks Trail and John P. Lacy Boulevard. Uh, the clerk would read the roll.
Alder Cole.
Hi.
Alder Posey.
Hi.
Alder Ricky.
Hi.
Alder Touche.
Hi.
Alder Cronin.
Hi.
Alder Journey.
Hi.
Alder Kemp.
Hi.
That motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to nine eight two. Alder Cole.
Thank you. Um, I'm making a motion to approve resolution number R dash twenty dash zero one four, approving a certified survey map to create one lot located at three nineteen Lincoln Street.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second? Uh, seconded by Alder Kemp, uh, Alder Cole.
The proposed certified survey map was submitted to the city to acquire land to be used for public utility purposes. Comments from the Plan Commission meeting on April eighth, twenty twenty included clarification of the location of the certified survey map and how the city will use this land. The Plan Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, seeing none. Uh, all those in favor, I will read the roll, uh, to determine who is in favor of resolution number R dash two zero dash zero one four, approving a certified survey map to create one lot located at three nineteen Lincoln Street. Uh, if the clerk would read the roll.
Alder Posey.
Hi.
Alder Ricky.
Hi.
Alder Touche.
Hi.
Alder Cronin.
Hi.
Alder Journey.
Hi.
Alder Kemp. Alder Cole.
Hi.
Uh, and with that, that motion passes. Um, anything further from Plan Commission?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to nine B, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, under item nine V one, I'm making a motion to award contract for project ID twenty twenty dash one zero seven, rapid rectangular flashing beacon pedestrian improvements.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp, uh, Alder Touche.
Uh, the, uh, RRFB project consists of the installation of the flashing beacons at four intersections, one at North Main Street and St. Andrews Church driveway, one at North Nine Mound Road and Edward Street, South Nine Mound Road and Military Ridge State Trail, and Whalen Road and Military Ridge Drive. We did receive three bids, lowest bid coming from Cummings and Turk. Um, with, uh, our estimates for this bid came to a total of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Cummings and Turks has completed and is currently working on other projects within the city. Based on past performance in the city and reference checks, Public Works and Public Works Committee recommend approval for Cummings and Turk not to exceed twenty thousand nine hundred and five dollars.
Thank you, uh, for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Oh, sorry, uh, Alder Posey.
Thank you. I just wanted to add the comment that I am so excited to see this moving forward, especially with the areas that we have selected to continue this. I know we installed the first one over by where Badger Ridge and Cornage are last year, as well as several others throughout the city, at targeted areas that are high pedestrian and high bike riding areas, and knowing the changes in the schools and walking, and knowing at least two of these. Areas and knowing the changes in the schools and walking and knowing at least two of these. Well, that I see them daily. I'm really excited to see these being put in. Immediately and in the immediate future as we get ready for the fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, other questions or comments on the motion?
I just want to add to the comments, uh, at the committee level. We discussed, um, uh, not only these locations but other locations that will be addressed in the future at the city. This is what we've been able to budget and. Actually, by grouping this and planning well ahead, we're saving quite a bit of money versus kind of the rush that we went through for. Uh, Badger Ridge Middle School. So I, I'm equally excited about this and really actually really happy that we're. That our city staff has taken the proactive approach to figure this out now before it becomes an issue.
Uh, other uh, questions or comments on the motion? I guess I'll just add myself. I think, yeah, I think this is wonderful. I think it's great work by city staff and I'm glad we're, we're being proactive on that. With that, uh, we will, uh, take the role on awarding a contract for project twenty twenty dash one zero seven. Rapid rectangular flashing beacon pedestrian improvements. If the clerk would read the role.
Alder Ricky?
Hi.
Alder Touche?
Hi.
Alder Cronin?
Hi.
Alder Journey?
Hi.
Alder Kemp?
Hi.
Alder Cole?
Hi.
Alder Posey?
Hi.
And that motion passes. Uh, we're on to uh, nine B two, Alder Touche.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, nine B two, I am making a motion to approve a developer's agreement for Kettle Creek North Phase Three Public Improvements.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp, Alder Touche.
Our city staff and city attorney have worked with the developer for Kettle Creek North in preparation for the development agreement. The agreement anticipates that construction. Uh, of the public improvements to serve the phase will commence starting late April this year and will be substantially completed in about. By the end of September of this year, pending permanent approvals. Phase three is the extension of Esker Drive towards the route of Tamarack Way.
Thank you, uh, for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, uh, we will have the clerk read the role regarding the developers agreement for Kettle Creek. North Phase Three Public Improvements, uh, Clerk Clark.
Alder Touche?
Hi.
Alder Cronin?
Hi.
I. Alder Journey?
Hi.
Alder Kemp?
Hi.
Alder Cole?
Hi.
Alder Posey?
Hi.
Alder Ricky?
Hi.
Uh, and that motion passes. I will move on to nine B three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this item, I am making a motion to approve, to approve a professional services agreement. With JT Engineering for Inspection Services for Development of the Woods at Cathedral Point.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? A second by Alder Cronin, uh, Alder Touche.
Uh, this agreement is for the inspection services, as I said, for Woods at Cathedral Point for public improvements. JT Engineering is also working for the city with administering street opening permits for utility projects. Uh, utility work staff is recommending that the contract with JT Engineering be approved. This is a pass through cost to the developer, so no cost to the city in the end. The contract shall not exceed ninety six thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and be contingent upon legal counsel review.
Thank you. And I think, I think it was the understanding of the body that that contingency was part of the motion. Um, with that, uh, motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing no hands, uh, we will have a roll call vote regarding, uh, professional services agreement with JT Engineering for Inspection Service for the. The development of the Woods at Cathedral Point contingent upon legal review. Uh, if Clerk Clark would read the role.
Alder Cronin?
Hi.
Alder Journey?
Hi.
Alder Kemp?
Hi.
Alder Cole?
Hi.
Alder Posey?
Hi.
Alder Ricky?
Hi.
Alder Touche?
Hi.
Uh, and that motion passes. Uh, with that, we'll move on to nine B four, uh, Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I am making a motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement for the Madison Area Municipal Stormwater Partnership.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Uh, seconded by Alder Kemp, uh, Alder Touche.
Thank you. This agreement is with uh, M A M S W A P. Which again is the Madison Area Municipal Stormwater Partnership. Is a re- is a renewal of an expired agreement. Uh, this agreement. Is for the cooperation between adjacent communities for storm water improvement and education. As part of the municipal separate storm sewer system permit. This is a four-year agreement with the starting cost range, start beginning at five thousand two hundred and twelve dollars in twenty twenty. And climbing to six thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars in twenty twenty-four. Uh, this, this, um, this is a, uh, uh, an agreement with all the municipalities around Madison and helping to manage and educate about our storm water.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments, uh, on the motion? Uh, Alder Ricky?
I was just wondering, are there any major changes to this agreement based on the flooding of the recent past?
I would actually lean on Mr. Jacobson for that answer.
I, I can probably take it.
Oh, great.
Ms. Fisher?
So it's more, it's more of a, it's, it's a storm water partnership. There, there isn't like the, there's not large like public works type projects that come out of it. So it's more the education and outreach piece, um, which each municipality is required to do as part of their, um, their municipal separate storm water. Our storm sewer permit, um, that they have. So it covers that, I guess, for all the surrounding communities. So I guess from like a cost standpoint, it's. Cheaper for every community to work together to do this versus each one doing it themselves. But like the overall. There's more like a water quality focus as part of this, less the flooding piece. Um, so it really wouldn't deal with that. I mean, there, there's some discussions. I mean, it's a good way to share knowledge across the groups as well. Um, but I wouldn't say that there's any real like infrastructure type projects that are done as a part of this group, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and, and just let me add, uh, Marty in our public works department has been doing the presenting on behalf of Verona. So he's really. Uh, in tune with what our portion of this agreement is and, and participates equally with all the other surrounding communities.
Uh, thank you for all that explanation. Uh, motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, uh, we will have the clerk read, read the role regarding the intergovernmental agreement for the Madison Area Municipal Stormwater Partnership as described in the pack.
Alder Journey?
Hi.
Alder Kemp?
Hi.
Alder Cole?
Hi.
Alder Posey?
Hi.
Alder Ricky?
Hi.
Alder Touche?
Hi.
Alder Cronin?
Hi.
Uh, and that motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to nine B five, Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, at this time, I am making a motion to approve amendment number one. For construction related services with AECOM at project ID twenty seventeen dash one one five, well, six.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp, uh, Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this amendment is for additional and extended services provided during the construction of well six. These services include design revisions requested by our staff. Sanitary sewer upsizing, road design revisions to ensure the integrity due to field conditions. Uh, and a chemical room containment and equipment. It also includes the extension of the contract time and additional shop drawings, review and or substitutions. Uh, this addition, this amendment, excuse me, is an additional thirty five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Which is above the original contract of a hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, making the total contract valued at one hundred sixty-six thousand one hundred dollars. I'd like to add, uh, this actually got a fair amount of discussion at the committee level. Um, the, the extensions are mo- are due to, uh, had the work period having to go longer. I believe what's up. Where, where it's budgeted for up to eight additional weeks. Some of this has to do with the COVID situation. Every time we extend these projects, there's more meetings to attend, more of the engineers time that needs to go there. On top of that, uh, when. Our contractor who is putting the well in and working on facility, when they make changes, value improvements, you know, propose new ideas that need to be reviewed by. Our engineers and that's what these costs cover.
You have, uh, heard the explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, uh, we will have a roll call vote regarding amendment number one for the construct, for construction related services with AECOM at project ID twenty seventeen dash one one five, well, six. Uh, if the clerk would read the role.
Alder Journey?
Hi.
Alder Kemp? Alder Cole?
Hi.
Alder Posey?
Hi.
Alder Ricky?
Hi.
Alder Touche?
Hi.
Alder Cronin?
Hi.
Uh, and that motion passes. Uh, anything further from public works?
That is all for tonight.
Thank you. Uh, next we'll move on to ten new business. Uh, under ten A, we have discussion and possible action regarding the payment of the bills. Uh, Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, regarding the payment of the bills, uh, in the amount of one million four hundred and thirty-two thousand. Eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents.
A motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cronin, uh, Alder Kemp.
Again, nothing of any, um, real controversy this, this week, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, there's a payment in the amount of four hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-four cents for our well six payment. There's also, uh, seventy-six thousand three hundred and forty-one dollar and one cent payment for, uh, to KSW Construction for the Fireman's Park Pay Request.
Uh, you've heard the explanation. Uh, questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Uh, seeing none, uh, we will have a roll call vote regarding paying the bills in the amounts specified. Uh, if Clerk Clark can read the role.
Alder Kemp?
Hi.
Alder Cole?
Hi.
Alder Posey?
Hi.
Alder Ricky?
Hi.
Alder Touche?
Hi.
Alder Cronin?
Hi.
Alder Journey?
Hi.
And that motion passes. Uh, next we'll move on to ten B, which is discussion and possible action regarding approving a landscaping agreement. With eight forty-one North Main Street LLC to allow landscaping on city property. Uh, Mr. Sayer?
Thank you. In two, April of twenty nineteen, a site plan and conditional use permit. Were approved for a one hundred unit age restricted senior housing units with assisted care at eight forty-one North Main. As part of the approval, there were six conditions of approval, approval the applicant must meet before. Issuing building permits, which included a deed restriction entering into a landscaping agreement to install plantings on public land. Install landscaping on city property as soon as practical. Complete a CSM, provide the city with a copy of the shared parking agreement and adds a significant number of evergreen landscaping trees to screen the property. The applicant has held numerous meetings in twenty nineteen with staff and the neighbors to discuss different landscaping options for the eastern portion of eight forty-one North Main Street. And the city owned outlots. Enclosed is the draft agreement. The proposed landscaping design for the outlots. The draft agreement was emailed to the, directly to the adjacent property owners that abutted the city outlots. At this time, staff has received no comments from the neighbors. At the request of the neighbors at a previous meeting in twenty nineteen. The outlot will not contain the pedestrian path. Uh, they had concerns about, uh, just people being on it and, uh, being so close to their houses. And staff recommends approval of the landscaping agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments or motions on ten B? Uh, Alder Cole?
I'll make a motion to approve a landscaping agreement with eight forty-one North Main Street LLC to all land, allow landscaping on city property.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Cronin, um, anything to add, Alder Cole?
No, thank you.
Uh, motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of approving the landscaping agreement with, uh, sorry. Um, we will have a roll call vote regarding approving the, a landscaping agreement with eight forty-one North Main Street LLC to allow landscaping on city property. Uh, if the clerk would read the role.
Alder Cole?
Hi.
Alder Posey?
Hi.
Alder Ricky?
Hi.
Alder Touche?
Hi.
Alder Cronin?
Hi.
Alder Journey?
Hi.
Alder Kemp?
Hi.
And that motion passes. Uh, next we will move on to item, uh, ten C, which is a discussion and possible action regarding, uh, updates from city departments on the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, Mr. Sayer, if you could get us started?
Thank you. So th- this item is going to take some time. So in the audience, um, you guys can't see them as pretty much every department head. And what we're going to do is kind of go around, um, in essence, the room or, or on the virtual room. And each department head is going to provide an update to the council on what their department is doing related to COVID nineteen and. Kind of give you a high level overview of what they've been doing. Uh, the intent is the kind of, they're going to shoot for about that five minute range on their update. Um, and then once they're done, if you have any questions for them, I would ask them right away because. Once they're done talking, I'm going to demote them back into the audience and it's just a slight effort to bring them back in. Um, so I guess I'll, I'll just kind of kick things off. Um, I'm going to take a few different apartments here, um, and just give you a brief overview. From the administration side, obviously, we've been working on many policies to address the COVID nineteen issue. Uh, you know, two of those significant policies are on the agenda later tonight. Um, we have in essence frozen most of our hiring at this point. Um, and the concerns being that, eh, especially with their part-time staff, if we struggle to find work for them in the future. We may have some options available in other departments if, if that need arises in the future. So. Part of the challenge too is some of these hirings, um, you know, our staff is, you know, we're not fully staffing buildings right now. It's a self crew in some cases. Um, some of those buildings are just, you know, they're, they're in essence closed or not available and we don't want to bring somebody else into a building if there's no. Seat for them during the COVID nineteen outbreak. Um, on the administration side, we had a lot of people helping with, with the election, uh, on this side. I think it's, I think we, a few Alders have brought up before. Uh, you know, the finance department helped, planning department, um, they did a, did a great job assisting with that. Um, and then finally, City Hall, uh, at least on the administration side is closed for the public. The, the lobby and the area to the police department remains open, but the administrative side is closed. So if people are paying their, their, any bills. Uh, they're encouraged to drop those in the drop box in, in the parking lots. Uh, finance department, so there really weren't many, many updates. Once again, staff has been helping from finance with the elections. Um, you know, bills still have to be paid, so they'll still be coming in for relatively the, the, the near future to make sure bills are being paid. Um, we are encouraging flexible hours across the board and trying to reduce staff, uh, uh, coming in, but. Finance, obviously, we got to make sure people are getting paid with payroll and, and the bills. So we'll continue to work with them. From a building inspection standpoint, inspections continue. That's classified as an essential service, uh, by the governor. So their election, their inspections continue. Um, they are splitting their time between City Hall and working from home. Uh, they are available still by phone or by email. So if someone does have an inspection, they're still making those, but. They're not holding as regular office hours as they normally would. And obviously, if people stop in, uh, to pick up a permit or to drop one off. They need to make those remote arrangements with the inspector, um, versus trying to stop in at City Hall because the, the doors are locked. Um, and then finally, planning, uh, once again, Catherine helped with the election. Uh, developments interest, I'd say, is probably slowing. Uh, developers are very cautious right now. Uh, they're kind of in a wait and see pattern of. How long does this go? It's a question that I think a lot of developers are asking of. Is, is it a short, uh, kind of span here or are we still talking about this in two or three months? So, um. You know, like, like I said, development interest, it's, it's still there, but everyone's gotten really cautious and really, really slow and methodical in what they're doing. So. Um, more to come on that, I think, in the coming weeks when, when we hopefully here slowly start pulling out of this, uh, pandemic. Um, so those are the updates I have for those kind of departments. Any questions for me before we turn it off to the next person?
Any questions for Mr.? Any questions for Mr. Sayer? Seeing none, whoever's up next?
Next is gonna be Ellen.
Hi, everybody. So I guess what we've done primarily for for covid had surrounded the election, of course, so we had help, as Adam mentioned, from everyone here in administration, from finance to Catherine and planning to Kayla has been like, like I I've told a couple other people, she's been like an Energizer Bunny, really keeping things together and getting those ballots out and and back and processed. In terms of covid specifically in the elections, we our extended hours for early voting were eliminated, and in-person absentee voting was limited to by appointment only. That worked out pretty well, actually. Excuse me, sneeze guards were built by Simon and his crew, and they were like nothing I've I saw anywhere else on the clerk's list. They were, they were, they were just perfect. Masks and gloves were supplied for our election workers. Some brought their own, and which was fine. We had large bottles of sanitizing solutions supplied by the Elections Commission, and the registration check-in stations were sanitized after every couple of voters, as well as the voting booths sanitized after every one or two voters. Simon marked six-foot intervals on the floors at both polling places for social distancing purposes, and that went pretty well for the most part. Once in a while, people were on top of each other, but mostly just crossing paths. We also had ten National Guard members assigned to Verona for the election, and that was fantastic, just fantastic. They took over most of the sanitizing duties and monitored social distancing as best they could. Helped inserting all the thousands of absentee ballots into the tabulator, helped with curbside voting. They were just incredibly helpful. And we also had city employees working on Election Day, several from the library, some people here from from administration as well. So that was wonderful. Getting the ballots out, and again, Kayla was pretty much in in charge of that, though they financed and excuse me, Catherine and planning and everyone were working very hard with that. It was really like a well-oiled machine, so it it worked out very well. In terms of numbers for the election, we had after today, I'm sorry, after today's canvas, the final numbers were five thousand one hundred and seventy total voters, and of those, four thousand three hundred and seventy of them voted absentee. I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Clerk Clark? Alder Journey?
So so how did this year's numbers compare with the previous years?
The last presidential preference and spring election was in two thousand sixteen, of course. And the numbers are about two hundred voters fewer than they were in two thousand sixteen.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Clerk Clark? Seeing none. Thank you. And whoever is next, Mr. Sayer?
All right, next up, we have Stacy Burkhart, our library director. Let me just promote Stacy right now. Stacy, you there?
I'm here. Hi, everyone. Just a quick up you update you. The library has been closed to the public since March sixteenth. Library staff are working from home. Our youth services staff is offering several programs a week online using either Facebook Live or Zoom, and those include storytimes and programs for school-aged children and teens. And we also have some adult programs online that are on our calendar, and we're working on developing more. Our staff are available to answer questions from the public via phone, email, and social media. And we're also heavily promoting our online resources right now, such as Overdrive, where we have access to thousands of ebooks and audiobooks. We also have RB Digital, which is offers over three thousand magazines digitally. We also have ancestry dot home, which ancestry dot com, which you can get you from home currently, which was not available from home before, and transparent languages. Those are probably the most popular ones. Staff are also doing a lot of online trainings and webinars from home, and several, as Ellen mentioned, several staff filled in as poll workers as well. All our library materials are automatically renewed until May first, and delivery of items between libraries was suspended back in mid-March. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Any questions? Seeing none, thank you for the update. Mr. Sayer?
Okay, next up, we have Stephanie, our senior center director. Let me find Stephanie. Stephanie, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Oh, there we go. Get my videos. There we go. Hi, everybody. A quick update from the Senior Center. We've been closed since the sixteenth as well. All of our staff are working from home except for essential business that needs to take place, mainly meals on wheels, having bills paid, et cetera. To limit exposure, we are only offering meals on wheels once per week, but we're supplying food for a week's worth of food for participants. On average, we're serving about eighteen to twenty people per week for Meals on Wheels. We are working with Badger Perry Needs Network, Festival Foods, TNT Catering, Miller's, and Dean County Consolidated Foods to make that happen. And a couple of local businesses have actually donated food. So a thank you to Fifth Quarter, The Draft House, and Hollander Restaurant at Hilldale. Transit Solutions, our bus company, is still running and available Monday through Friday. They are helping with deliveries on Tuesday, which has been great. So it's myself and the bus driver delivering the meals on wheels. They're offering service trips for things like Walgreens and food pickup, and they have a maximum of two people on the bus at a time. And Transit Solutions is also a new service. They are shopping for people for their groceries and delivering to seniors free of charge. And that's across Dean County. And then our case management, they're serving about a hundred and fifty people per week. They're making about a hundred and fifty calls per week. So they're staying very busy. And our programs team is just finding new ways to connect with seniors via email, Facebook, YouTube, phone calls, et cetera. We're completing a lot of continuing education things and other webinars online as well.
Thank you for the update. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sayer?
So next up, we have Casey, our recreation director. Let me find Casey.
All right, there we go. Hey. Hello, everyone. So as far as the recreation department, we are in a big holding pattern. Clearly, our office has been closed since March sixteen is sixteenth as well. And, you know, you don't want to say this, but it happening in late February, early March was a better time for the rec department, so to speak. But if it continues much longer, it's gonna be much more difficult. So basically, our spring soccer program has been pushed back. We were scheduled to start actually today. And I've emailed out all our registrants and let them know that unfortunately, we're not gonna be starting on time. We're hoping to possibly start in May, but clearly, that's probably up in the air right now and and probably not looking good. We did have a couple of engineering classes that started in mid to late February. We held two classes at Sugar Creek, and then the covid, you know, the policy hit, so they've went virtual. So the engineering group is doing it virtual learning, basically. So that's been really good. So we really haven't had to refund anyone in that regard. When it comes to refunds, I've had a few requests for refunds. We had a babysitting class scheduled for March twenty eighth. Clearly, that got canceled. We have one in April. That's going to be canceled. So I've offered them all opportunities to take future classes. We have classes all the way through August. Again, hopefully, we can get back to assemble of some normal normalcy. So you know, then we have youth baseball and our summer programs and the beach. All of that is stuff that we're waiting on. Basically, what we can do. Can we open up these things and slowly do those kinds of things? So really, we're in a holding pattern, and most likely, we're gonna have to be doing some mass refunds, at least for spring soccer. I'm hoping we can have youth baseball in the summer. But that that is up in the air as well. So we're really hoping to get some guidance from public health and the governor here in the next couple of weeks, I guess.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Alder Journey?
So I'm curious, as far as the beach is concerned, will you hold off setting that up until it's a looks like it's gonna be a go as far as swimming is concerned?
Yes, that's something that we will have to wait and hear from the governor and the health department and and kind of where that goes. Clearly, the beach, when it's a hot day and it's, you know, really nice out in the middle of June or July, we could get upwards of two, three hundred people. So the likelihood of us doing that in June and July, I believe, is slim. So what we would do is put signage up and call it closed until we get the green light to at least maybe open, and then it may be on a limited basis.
Other questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you. Mr. Sayer?
It's Casey. So next up, we have Dave Walker. Dave, you there?
I think so. Am I here?
Yes.
Okay, a lot of pop-ups, so I'm just hitting buttons here. But anyway, as far as parks and forestry, we've been at half-staff for the last three weeks, rotating, so I got two guys in, two guys off. I've been going in as needed, two, three days a week, mainly for a couple hours in the morning. Other than that, I've been working from home, getting emails, phone calls, texts at home. Shelters and playgrounds are closed. We have hooked the water up at all our shelters, so that once we can open them, should be pretty quick and easy to do so. Parks are getting used fairly heavily, although we're, you know, trying to do what we can to discourage gatherings, like full taped off the playgrounds. But there's a lot of people out walking, and our guys have been emptying a lot of trash cans, so at least people have something to do to get outside. So at least they still have that. Our workload's gotten a little lighter, because obviously, a lot of Casey's leaks are canceled. Adult softball would push back. We would be doing soccer fields now, but we're not doing that. Little League, so far, has been pushed back to May fifteenth. I think it'll probably be a little later than that yet, although they haven't officially decided that yet. We are coming in the spring season, and like Casey said, it's really kind of a good time of year for us because we're sorting that winter to spring transition. We've got all of our equipment switched over to spring now. We haven't had to mow yet, although that's coming quickly. I've talked to all of our mowing guys. I think in the next couple of weeks, we'll have to be all doing that. We have about seventy-five trees coming in, although we haven't seen them yet. They'll be here next week, so we're getting to push come to shove time, but I think, you know, as far as with half-staff, we've been doing pretty good so far. As we get into closer to the end of next week, we'll probably have to start getting into more of our regular workload, but at least I think my guys are pretty okay with that. So that's where we're at now. So hopefully, we can stick to that plan moving forward.
Thank, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Walker? Seeing none, thank you very much for the update. Mr. Sayer?
Okay, next up, we have Aaron.
So everyone got me?
Yes. In a second, we'll have you.
All right. You got my audio, I'm guessing?
We do. There you go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. This obviously is challenging. As you can see, I'm sitting in my office here, so public works staff, obviously, we're an essential service, so the water's on, the sewer's flowing downhill, or we're pumping it. Street maintenance is obviously ongoing. The, we share an office with the Parks Department, Rec Department, of course, so we've been closed since the sixteenth, like other buildings. I'll break this up into operational changes that affect the public, and then operational changes that we've done internally. And then I'll give an overview of the capital improvement projects. I'm looking down, because I got some notes here. Changes that affects the public, obviously, the office is closed. The recycling slash recycling center out back is open, except we're not taking e-waste, tire disposal, or oil at this time, because those take interactions with staff due to the monetary transfers and cost for those. Curbside bulk pickup did get modified last week with coordination with waste management. So basically, you needed to put a couch out or bulk curbside, anything that doesn't fit in your refuse container. There's two dumpsters down at the Public Works site that you can bring those items to. It was a a risk that waste management was seeing with their drivers touching all kinds of additional garbage, getting close to their face and such forth, so it just was not a good situation. So it has gone well with the dumpsters down here so far. We'll see how that transition trends. Operational changes internally. We're about two-thirds staff here, one-third home. That's more for the outside staff on the operational standpoint. It depends on what department, either utilities or public works, who's here or not, but all the essential services are being are functioning. Any office staff that has a capability to work remotely is. I'm, it depends on what my wife's schedule is, whether I'm here or not, or teaching the kids, which they just might learn a little bit extra math and not so much by the time I'm done with them. Staff is working in small groups, meaning the outside staff. If they are working in groups, they're in their equipment, so they're segregated just by the type of work they're doing. Any meetings that office staff has or others with either consultants or other regulatory agencies are remote, just like this meeting. And then we always, we have a workflow plan that we made that is used by me and my supervisors. If something happens, what's our backup plan? Meaning, if somebody gets sick, or if there is a I have an operator that's down, what's my backup plan if we have a water main break? So there is no good time for this to occur. There is no good time for this to occur anywhere, but with it not being the dead heat of winter. And, you know, two feet of snow on the ground. This is unfortunately, fortunately, probably a. If this was going to happen now would be the time where it doesn't affect us greatly. Capital improvement projects wise regarding, these are projects we are administering. So our rehab project, our chip seal and the one you just awarded tonight for the R F Bs. I do not see any changes with those schedules at all. Luckily, we do not have a large. Road project that we are administering. There is obviously other projects that are being done by others that we have involvement with. Such as a Verona area school district transportation improvements or development projects. But none of them have any major impacts. On arterial streets for closures of such that we need to be concerned with if. Work needed to be completely a hundred percent halted. Well, that's kind of my overview. I can take any questions from anyone at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Jacobson? Alder Ricky.
I just wondered, in your list of things that you were not taking at the drop-off site, it was e-waste tires and what was the other thing?
The oil and oil filter recycling, Heather. The reason why we're not, there's no fee for that. It's just in the same bin. As the tire disposal and we fenced both of those off, so that's the only reason it's, we're not taking that.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, and it's posted to on our doors. It's on the website. It's, we have an A-frame traffic control. Like to, that you'd see on a sidewalk closure, right by the entrance to the back that says what's available and what's not, so we've. We've done the advertisement, so hopefully that was good enough.
Any further questions for Mr. Jacobson? Seeing none. Thank you very much for the update. Mr. Sayer.
Thanks, Darren.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Okay, next up is Chief Coughlin.
You there?
Yep. Waiting for your video. Do you have video, Bernie?
How's that?
Pretty good.
Good, yeah.
Excellent. All right. Thanks for giving me a few minutes. Just a quick explanation, we've taken a conservative, calculated and reasonable approach. And consciously avoided making any knee-jerk emotional decisions, so just going to provide you with a. Kind of a timeline, a layout of date and action taken, which is pretty consistent with what we do with a lot of incidents. January thirtieth, World Health Organization declared COVID nineteen.
Mike seems a little like there's feedback or something.
Okay.
That's better.
Any better? Okay. March sixth, we suspended officers responding to EMS calls where the nature of the call was for a sick person. Like flu-like symptoms or general illnesses when immediate law enforcement intervention wasn't needed. March twelfth, Governor Evers declared public health emergency. On March fourteenth, we suspended ride-alongs, department tours, fingerprinting, face-to-face response to minor calls. That we could handle over the phone and also suspended community engagement activities in certain EMS calls. March seventeenth, the emergency order prohibiting mass gatherings of ten people or more. March seventeenth as well. We drafted the ordinance that you're going to take a look at shortly, seeking your approval. Relating to violations of law relating to health. It adopts state statute two fifty-two point two five, which allows better enforcement action if necessary. And I'll say it's only if necessary. We've done everything we could honestly to avoid enforcement action. Despite numerous complaints, I think we've only had one incident which resulted in enforcement, and that was an incident. With repeated violations up at Redden Soccer Park of a larger gathering. On March eighteenth, DA's office and Dane County Sheriff's Office requested limits to the amount of in custody arrests when possible. And to consider instead ordering defendants to court in lieu of incarceration. On March nineteenth, Juvenile Reception Center also limited taking custody of juveniles that don't meet. Criteria being, quote, substantial risk of physical harm to any person if not held in secure custody, end quote. March twentieth, suspended all trainings, including in-service. We canceled our April-May in-service session. Our next scheduled.
I think we might have lost your audio again.
Okay, better?
Yes.
Okay. March twentieth as well, we initiated a pre-trip squad cleaning process where we just used a solution of water and bleach. Where officers do a pre and post-trip cleaning of their squads. March twentieth. The Dane County Communications Center started asking questions of callers in an attempt to ascertain symptoms of people that. EMS and law enforcement are responding to. March twenty-third. We suspended the work of our limited-term employees, our clerical employees, until further notice. If permanent clerical staff members were to become ill with COVID nineteen, LTE employees could be utilized as as backups. On March twenty-fourth. We adjusted the schedule of one of our full-time clerical members and moved her to a Wednesday through Sunday to provide. To limit exposure during the week and also provide coverage for in custody arrests over the weekend. That also then alleviated the need for us to pull in limited-term employees to. Transcribe those reports on the weekend as well, limiting or reducing our exposure. March twenty-fourth, a safer-at-home order was issued effective eight AM on the twenty-fifth. On the twenty-sixth, we developed return-to-work guidelines as it pertains to VPD employees who've been exposed or suspected to have been exposed to COVID nineteen. This included a symptom monitoring, a symptom self-monitoring log. On the thirty-first of March, staff was directed to provide email complainants if they believe. Believe a business may be in violation of emergency order twelve. They were referred to Public Health Dane County Madison. We also directed staff to track information pertaining to all calls for service related to the complaints of emergency order number twelve. On April first, city released Families First Coronavirus Act, and also then on April first, city released. PD Emergency Responder Sick Lead Policy. And FMLA policy addendum to the City of Roanoke's FMLA policy. April first as well, safer-at-home compliance document released by Public Health Madison in Dane County to give guidance. On how to handle, where to refer business complainants regarding non-compliance issues. Later that day on the first as well, updated email address for people to file complaints to Dane County Madison Public Health. And also later that day on the first, we received minimal supply of personal protective equipment. And with that limited supply through Dane County Emergency Management, we were able to provide as many as five. Pulseless non-breather packs for the worst, worst possible case if we had to deal with and we only had to use one sense. April second, emergency order number nineteen was released, relates to COVID nineteen information by officials and the requirement for disclosure of COVID nineteen. The reason that that was released is we were having. Debates among the various officials involved as to whether or not that information should remain confidential or not. And our first responders were of the opinion that it should be required to be released so we could. Protect ourselves as necessary. April second, emergency order. It's, excuse me, April second, provided guidance on emergency order number nineteen as it pertains to radio communications and response. As well as dispatched information, so that information, instead of being provided over the air. Audio was actually provided through our mobile. Data computers to provide greater confidentiality for. Individuals that may have been impacted directly. Also, on April second, we reduced our shift briefing. We modified those so that fewer people had to be involved directly and could do more so electronically. April third, change is made to suspend seeking search warrants for civil O W I arrest to obtain blood samples if the arrested person refuses to submit. To a test of their breath. And then on April eighth, we started using a chlorine dioxide spray for cleaning our squads and gear, and that was as a recommendation from. Patrick Anderson from EMS and also from Casey Dudley, which was much appreciated, so. So a general overview of the steps that we've taken thus far. If you have any questions or comments, let me know.
Any questions for Chief Coughlin? Alder Journey.
It's, it sounds like you haven't had any exposures, the officers had exposures to coronavirus?
We had one exposure or suspected exposure. However, the officer did not develop any symptoms. He did a self-isolation and monitoring and everything turned out well for him, and he was allowed to return to work without, without missing any duty.
And then just out of curiosity, do you have access to testing?
We do now. That was delayed for quite a while, but we were moved from the second tier to the first, so. The, the testing, I've been told that that it's going to be faster now. And we did have one officer who had been out prior to the new policy being in place, so prior to April one. He was out for actual suspected influenza A and B and strep throat, subsequently received the testing. Which was negative prior to him returning to duty today.
Thank you. And then, God forbid, but if. A certain number of officers had to be quarantined, and that would put you at a critical mass of risk as far as staffing is concerned. Are there any alternatives to cover the force? Just in case there are a number of officers would have to go out.
Yes, we've, we've thought that through as well and tried to prepare the best that we can for a continuity of services. At which time we would begin implementing a change of schedule. Likely pursuing, right now, our officers currently and historically have worked a. Six-on and three-off rotation, which is an average of about thirty-seven and a half hours per week. And some agencies in Dane County and the state have gone to modified schedules in which some involve six-on, six-off. Twelve-hour shifts. Or four-on and four-off, or a variety of ten-hour shifts as well, so. In essence, would be longer workdays for people, but reduced possible exposure, so. We have a few options that we have considered, and that would be our first start. And then secondly, we would assist others with moving supervisors to fill the road, working patrol. And subsequently also rely on a mutual aid from neighboring agencies if necessary as well, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions for Chief Coughlin? Seeing none. Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Mr. Sayer.
So next up, we have Dan Mahaka from the Fire Department. Danny, you there?
I am.
There you go.
All right, so on the Fire Department side, we're still responding to calls, which is a good thing. Nothing changed that way, unfortunately for us. Go on the calls. I would say that there's a little more nervousness with our employees going on calls because we get. Called out to the places where people might suspect they're having these issues. As far as the station is concerned, we have closed the station to public. We're trying to limit to as few people as we can, so that makes it just the duty crews most of the time, and then a couple. Chief-level officers from both our organization and from Fitzroona being in-house at any point in time. So most of the time, there's six to eight people down here, and that's it. We have also suspended all of our in-person training. We've moved that to online along with our meetings. We're just, we're able to accomplish that through Microsoft Teams. And go to meeting, which has been nice and actually been working fairly well for us. As far as call volume, call volume has slowed a little bit, I would say with it. But not too much. We're still having fires every now and then, car accidents every now and then, and so forth. We are definitely doing a lot more disinfecting and cleaning. Trying to make sure that we keep our, the workforce healthy here and public in general. I've also asked the crews to limit their time outside of the station. So any unneeded trips or even trying to keep our training or back at the station instead of going out in the public like we normally do. All of our fire inspections have been put on hold for now. We still are doing new. Building occupancy permits and so forth, so we still are getting some of that taken care of, but that has also slowed down a fair amount. Yes, with that, if anybody has any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Alder Journey.
I'm going to ask the same questions I asked Chief Coughlin. Have you had any fire responders who have been exposed to coronavirus? And you also have testing?
So with the state guideline, they're pretty much saying if you go outside, you're exposed to it. Any more than that, as far as like on calls and so forth, nothing that has been. Horrible so far yet. We do deal with cases, but if we're wearing our appropriate protective equipment, it's not considered an exposure for us. Which is a good thing, and that's been, we have enough equipment right now at our, for our use that has been able to keep us safe. As far as outside of that, like non-job-related, we've had two. Cases of, you know, family exposure to possible coronavirus. So we've had a couple days off for one part-time member at this point in time, and but that's it for that. As far as. Staffing, if it were to get into the department. We run the twenty-four forty-eight, or the twenty-four-hour shifts, I should say, so we should be fairly good. Hopefully, it doesn't hit everybody at once. If it were to happen with that, we have had conversations countywide as far as mutual aid agreements. And so forth, so that alternate departments in the county and even surrounding counties can come and help out if needed.
Thank you. And, and do you have access to testing?
We do. So we're in tier two in the state, and then state of Wisconsin, tier one and tier two are kind of clumped together. So it's still done through their primary providers, but once they call in and go through the questionnaires with their primary doc. They will then be, as long as they let them know that they're a first responder firefighter, they'll have the opportunity for the testing.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing no further questions. Thank you for the update. You too. Mr. Sayer.
Thanks, Dan. So last is Patrick Anderson from Fitzroona EMS. I lost him. There we go. Patrick, you muted. Okay. Yep, you're good.
But after waiting patiently all evening, you kicked me out of the meeting. Good evening, everyone. I don't have a big beautiful project board. I'm kind of jealous of what Darren had in his background, like big, big old plans of stuff he was going to do. So similar to what Chief Coughlin and Chief Mahak are explaining there. Um, so uh similar to what Chief Coughlin and uh and Chief Mahak are explaining there, so. Personnel uh personnel wise, we're very fortunate. I'm still up to a hundred percent staff. Um, we've had a couple of people with some um essentially, we're gonna call them flu-like symptoms. One of them actually did go in and get tested at some point. Uh, and this was over the last four weeks or so, so fairly early in the process, he tested negative. Um, the other person tested for flu, um, so again, very fortunate. We're at a, we're still at a hundred percent of staffing levels of our, at least our street medics. Uh, myself and Deputy Chief Dostalik are still coming into work as much as we can. Um, probably two, two full days a week. I think we sit on teleconferences just like this, um, becoming very zoom experts on life. Um, so two days a week are full of those. Uh, we do have Michelle, who's our office manager, has been primarily working from home. Uh, what she can't do from home, essentially printing checks and signing them, uh, myself and and Jeff have actually picked that up on the. In in the station, uh, essentially. Um, we do have contingency plans. Uh, I've continued to work through those over the last couple of weeks on. Uh, good case, bad case, worst case kind of scenarios on exactly what we can kind of lose is our workforce. Adjusting schedules and uh still stay in business. Uh, the Department of Health, who's who is centrally provides the oversight for EMS agencies uh about a week ago. Um, the governor signed a waiver, so there's um some pretty significant waivers that were granted as far as staffing levels and. And gives us actually a lot more options um emergently essentially that we can do without actually having to go through the whole application process to change staffing levels. Um, that is only granted through the state of emergency, so right now that's that's the next four weeks. Hopefully, we don't have to get into that. Um, as Chief Mahaka also said, um, we're working on a cross credentialing kind of proposal. With a couple of the paramedic agencies in Dane County. Um, to be really proactive, as he said, should should the the worst case scenario come in and and take out. Uh, half of our workforce either from illness or family illness or in quarantine. And we're actually able to staff uh our own trucks or assistant cross credentialing and getting trucks to our our neighboring services. Um, so lots of plans in their place as well. I work with our fire departments. Uh, we could actually run to go down to a single uh single paramedic and a firefighter as a driver. Uh, that was part of the waiver process, so uh lots of options we've got out there kind of based on the scenario we're presented with. Um, but should, right, should um be able to keep all three trucks in service uh and play with those as far as personnel goes. Um, hot topic in the news is of course the personal protective equipment. I'm gonna consider ourselves really fortunate. We're actually sitting in a really good spot. Um, for personnel protective equipment. Um, it was one of the, I don't know, the ironic thing or uh the the mask, these N ninety-five masks you hear about in the news were predominantly used for. Tuberculosis patients. Um, I've I've had cases of them sitting in the shelves, probably the, it's the same cases that have probably been in the nineteen years I've been here. Have probably been sitting in those shelves for nineteen years. Um, who who would have ever thought we would have needed of this many N ninety-five masks? Um, so really fortunate for what we have, uh, I think I heard it was Stephanie um kind of did a shout out, so. Uh, Verona Safety Supply donated a huge uh thousands of N ninety-five masks um to us in Dane County, so. We kind of took our share of what we project we'll need for the next couple of months, gave those to Dane County to redistribute. Um, St. Mary's SSM Health and UW um helped us with some gowns and some face shields. Um, the Verona School District actually was able to donate some uh gloves and some masks. Uh, Yahar Bay Distillery uh was actually donated a couple of cases of hand sanitizer, so a huge asset uh for us. It it, you know, the the next request was we'd like it bourbon scented. The podcast that doesn't smell like anything but hand sanitizer, but it it's been a phenomenal help for us. Um, and then Chief Coughlin talked a little bit about last week, um, Orin Technologies Company there in Verona uh started working with them last week on some. A larger scale kind of disinfectant, that's a, I don't want to call it less toxic, um, but probably a little bit more health friendly. Um, with the the dioxide-based cleaners um that we can actually put in some backpack sprayers, so do some um large-scale disinfecting and um. Of our ambulances, of our stations, um, equipment, clothing, um, so that's kind of actually been the latest thing we've been able to do here. Just to make sure that we are are safe as well from uh ourselves as well as our patients. Operationally wise, kind of mentioned uh two to three times a week, reaching out with Dane County Emergency Management, Dane County EMS Chiefs. Um, to make sure that we're all doing uh what the Dane County Public Health is advising, who's doing primarily what the CDC is advising, so make sure we're. Best practices. Fortunately, in the last week or so, things have leveled off a little bit. The first couple of weeks before that, it was, it there was times that felt like every hour. Like the guidance, the guidance changed to to keep up with best practices, so we're think we've kind of found a a good place, a happy place. I mean, kind of see that from the numbers, though, they're gonna go up. Um, you you've heard the peak is two weeks away. Um, we're we're realizing that, but I I truly believe we're we're doing what we're supposed to be doing and keeping. Extending that plateau, keeping it lower um to to be able to to deal with what we got. Um, Chief Coughlin mentioned a couple of weeks ago, um, we were actually doing it before the CDC, um, the state, the governor mandated it. The nine-one-one center is actually doing some screening, so there's a handful of questions and those have actually changed over the last couple of weeks as well. Um, s- simple things like, do you have a fever? Do you have a cough? That they. Uh, we don't call them COVID patients. We call them that they're EIDS, actually stands for uh emerging infectious diseases. Um, so they're an EIDS positive patient. Doesn't mean they have COVID. It essentially means they have a fever, cough and and something. Um, they're they're high risk is what they are, and that's regardless of the age. Um, so we're actually notified of those on the way to the call. Um, our crews, uh, we we still treat every single patient, as you've heard in the news, right? It's community spread. Uh, we're treating every single patient like they have this, whether they're symptomatic or not. Really, it just is, are we going in with a full gown, ma- mask, face shield and and a N ninety-five mask? And we are wearing a basic, at a minimum, a surgical mask on on every patient contact, just 'cause we don't know. Uh, other chiefs had mentioned this as well, and we started doing this weeks ago, reducing the number of responders. Um, asking police to just be in the area but not respond unless it's truly an emergent or we need their help. Um, doing this in both municipalities, they're kind of staying in the neighborhood for us. Very similar with fire, they're responding out to calls with us, but they're staying outside of the residence. Um, or if they have to very sending one person in, even with our own crews, if we can only send one person into a home and kind of assess what that need is. Uh, we're just, we're we're trying to reduce the number of people that were even potentially exposing. Few adjustment in our patient care protocols, working closely, as I mentioned, with Dane County EMS, the UW Health System on the Emergency Education Center, that's our. Our medical direction, our consortium, um, with a couple other paramedic providers in Dane County have adjusted a couple of practices of essentially reducing. Not ever compromising care. Similar things to uh nebulizing medications to these patients with respiratory issues. It just starts to nebulize that infection as well, um, so reducing nebulized medications of Verona Pharmacy. Uh, was another one, kind of a good shout out, has been phenomenal, working with us, getting with uh getting medications to us at cost. Um, versus going through our normal supply routes where either we can't get it or it's just really cost prohibitive and we're not able to to to. We can't roll those costs over to patients. It's not gonna happen, so um, he uh he's been really phenomenal over there, getting us some changes in our protocols. I guess the last thing I would uh mention is, a- as we're kind of spooling up to uh the potential peak here, working with our area hospitals, another thing we've started to venture into. Uh, within county and a couple other paramedic agencies, um, is actually interfacility transports. So that's actually something we're not licensed to do through the state of Wisconsin, for kind of doing some investigation on how we do that. That was one of the waivers. Um, as patients potentially will need to be moved from the hospital, will be discharged from the hospital. Um, or transferred between hospitals in the area um to open up beds or ICU beds. Um, that's something we've kind of thrown our name in the hat of, of how can we assist with that, um, financially supported. Uh, a- as well as resources-wise, um, so lots of kind of moving parts with all of this. Um, that's kind of what I have in a nutshell.
Thank you for the update. Uh, any questions for Chief Anderson? Seeing none, uh, thank you for the update.
Welcome. It's Patrick.
Uh, Mr. Sayre.
Those are all the updates that I have, and the only thing that I would just add is. You know, I think we've, you've probably seen a lot of this online, but just go support your local businesses as much as you can. Uh, they are struggling immensely, and we've had layoffs in this or furloughs in the city already. Uh, our 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 small businesses are struggling as well, so. Any opportunity anybody can make during this to help support those businesses is critically important at this point. Um, so I just encourage everyone to do that as much as possible.
I completely agree. Uh, with that, we will move on to uh ten D, which is a discussion and possible action regarding resolution. Uh, R dash twenty dash zero one five Declaration of Emergency in the City of Verona and Authorization of Joint Executive Authority to Implement Necessary. Measures in response to COVID nineteen. Uh, Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. This resolution ratifies the mayor's emergency proclamation due to COVID nineteen executed on March sixteen, twenty twenty. In addition, this resolution authorizes the mayor and city administrator to have joint executive authority to implement measures. They determine to be necessary in the response to the COVID nineteen outbreak. The common council is declaring a local state of emergency. Until such time that the state of Wisconsin's health public, excuse me, state of Wisconsin's public health emergency declaration is lifted. The full allocation of city resources are available to ensure the continuation of core city services in the midst midst of this pandemic. This action also directs city staff to track expenses, potential reimbursements that might become available. The staff recommends the council adopt the resolution for this item.
Uh, thank you. Uh, before we uh initiate debate, I have a question, uh, Mr. Sayre. Uh, from a practical perspective, day to day, um, uh, what is, what impacts have we seen from the declaration?
You know, we've been, quite honestly, we've been, we've been fortunate. Uh. From a declaration standpoint, we did put in some emergency policies. Um, you know, two of those tonight are gonna be voted on by the council. Before that, we put in place some additional COVID nineteen policies. Outside of what the council would have typically approved. Uh, that's something that staff worked with Mayor Diaz on to get his approval to kind of put those in place. Generally, beyond that, we 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 haven't, we haven't seen too much from an expense standpoint. Staff is tracking their time, that the big thing that we have purchased is just a lot of those cleaners, sanitizers. Um, cleaning products that we normally wouldn't buy. Now, um, we bought some extra ones for the election. Um, you know, I know the police was in the process of procuring some supplies as well. Uh, we've kind of pre-ordered typical supplies that we normally would wait until the end of the year, just because if it takes six months to get those. And we're still in this in six months, we should be proactively doing that. Um, but a- as of right now, uh. You know, the big one was just a lot of those initial policies that we put in place. Uh, we're very fortunate that our sick leave policy. Um, actually covers this situation, so sick leave time is available to employees and it specifically implies or calls out. Uh, potential local health emergency. Um, so we've been very fortunate that. Whoever drafted that sick time policy, put that language in there, and that's been made available to employees and employees have been using it. Um, we expanded that slightly and allowed people to use that, you know, for dependents, for their children, so if their kid's school was closed, which now all of them are. Uh, because of this, they can use that sick time as well, too, so uh, I guess the big thing has been, as of today, has been the policies. Depending on how long this goes, it could get more into the cost issue and and what this pol- what this will do is. Um, instead of going to the typical process of getting this authorized by the council, if there's a need for us to do something that costs money. Or spend those funds, uh, you know, Luke and I, you know, especially Luke, would have that authority to put that in place. And for some reason, if if Luke and I are incapacitated or whatever happens to us. Uh, the next person in line would be the chief of police, would be authorized to act and implement this policy or resolution.
Yeah, i- if I may just add one thing, I don't anticipate day to day, this is gonna have a huge impact on anybody, but you know, it it's there in case of emergencies. Um, and I would expect for most stuff, like you're saying tonight, it's gonna come back to the council. Um, cause you know, we can meet and we're meeting, so we should, we should go to the council for approval on things. Um, with that, uh, questions, comments, or motions on item ten D? Anyone want to take a crack at a motion? I'll recall.
Okay, um, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R dash twenty dash zero one five. Declaration of Emergency in the City of Verona and Authorization of Joint Executive Authority to Implement Necessary Measures in Response to COVID nineteen.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second? Second by Alder Touche, I believe. Um, anything to add? Alder Cole?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, motion before the body, uh, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, seeing none, uh, we will have a roll call vote on uh resolution number R dash two zero dash zero one five. Declaration of Emergency in the City of Verona and Authorization of Joint Executive Authority to Implement Necessary Measures in Response to COVID nineteen. Uh, if the clerk would read the roll.
Alder Polzy?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
And with that, uh, that motion passes, uh, we'll move on to ten E, which is a discussion and possible action regarding. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the Public Health Emergency. Emergency Family and Medical Leave and Emergency Paid Sick Leave Policies. Uh, Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. So this item is the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which is the F F C R A. Which expanded the Family and Medical Leave Act, the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act. And created a paid sick time entitlement, which is called Emergency Paid Sick Time Leave Act. For all eligible full-time and part-time employees, and that was signed into law on March eighteenth of twenty twenty by President Trump. This leave, this leave would allow an eligible employee to take up to twelve weeks of paid leave for COVID nineteen-related absences. Two of the twelve weeks will be paid at one hundred percent of the employee's regular time if the employee is sick or quarantined with COVID nineteen. Or co- or COVID nineteen-related symptoms. Another ten weeks will be paid at two-thirds of the employee's salary, and that's available for employees who need care for a sick or quarantined family member. Or to care for children who cannot be in school or childcare due to COVID nineteen. Provisions of the F F C R A became effective on April first, twenty twenty, so. Basically, these these policies are in response to the the federal law that was put in place on March eighteenth. Within the F F C R A, there is a provision which allows local governments to exempt emergency responders and healthcare providers. From provisions of the F F C R A. The purpose of the exemption language is to allow local governments to identify. Those category of employees who continue, whose continued work in their respective roles is vital and necessary for the local response to COVID nineteen. The policy defines which positions are considered first responders and qualify for exemptions in the F F C R A. And those include police and fire department staff. To address concerns, the need for emergency paid sick leave for these emergency responders who are exempted from the F F C R A. Staff developed a separate two-week pay leave policy for those exempted employees who may be unable to work because of a positive COVID nineteen test. Care for a family member who has tested positive or need for quarantine due to exposure. Emergency pay leave, emergency pay leave policy has been reviewed and accepted by the police department and the union. And the fire department union has not accepted the emergency paid leave at this time. I'd be happy answering questions from the council.
And just to clarify, are you looking uh then for a motion to approve at some point these policies?
Correct, so these these policies, these are, the policy, this policy's been put in place by Luke and myself as an emergency policy. Because it was effective on April first of twenty twenty. Um, because this does have. Weave components to it, it it essence seems to be proved by the common council, so in your packet. Uh, we have the the policy, we also have the policy that was approved by the police department and their union. And then we also included in the packet, which is stamped as draft and dated four, six, twenty twenty, uh, the latest proposal to the. Fire Department uh union that has not been accepted. But yes, I'm looking for a motion of of some type.
Thank you. Uh, with that, um, I would open it up to questions, comments, or motions, uh, Alder Cole, and then Alder Ricky.
Um. So I guess I'm gonna. Kind of tied, I guess, with what like uh Matt Miller, um, and Kyle were saying as far as like. I think I'm more in favor of the ninety-six hours, just so there is more. Parity with the Fitzrona EMS, so they share the same building with them. Um, I think it, you know, and considering they work forty-eight hour shifts, if we, they only get seventy-two, that's really only three working days or. For them essentially, and to be, you know, on par with what we're giving everybody else in the city as far as covering like a full two weeks. Kind of, I feel like we should give them the ninety-six hours. Um, and I know Middleton Fire Department today just um got the ninety, ninety-six hours for their firefighters, so. Um, I guess I would say I'm more in favor of that. I didn't know if like. It can make a motion to amend it, or we need to see kind of like read the room kind of situation, or. it can make a motion to amend it, or we need to see kind of like read the room kind of situation, or?
The, the council, um, sorry, I'm getting some weird feedback. And so, I mean, maybe we could have a round of discussion and see where people are at, and then we could, uh, uh, have motions. Um, with that, uh, Alder Ricky and then Alder Touche.
Um, I guess I'll hold off on my, my comments till I hear more from other people.
Okay, uh, Alder Touche.
Can, uh, city staff explain the differences and what the thought process was on why it's different?
Uh, Mr. Sayer?
Sure. So we made the same offer that the police department approved. We made that offer to the fire departments, the fire union. That offer at that point included 96 hours and then included those two criteria that are in the police department leave. And that includes, there's an employee has a positive test for COVID-19, or if the employee is carrying for a member of the immediate family living in the household who has tested positive for COVID-19. So that was shared with, uh, Ted Higgins. Uh, Ted and I had a verbal agreement on that. And then the next day, we no longer had a verbal agreement. The next day, there were some additional demands that, um, Ted requested. Quite honestly, I think we, we, we have the bigger concern of our responsibility as staff is to make sure we can staff, fully staff the department. And we had concerns potentially with the language that was proposed, and that language is very similar to what is in the kind of draft policy that was in the packet with those four criteria. Um, and I think Ted's concern was possibly trying to get that COVID-19 test. I think our concern is just, you know, management for the city is just making sure that these are first responders that we need to make sure are available. And our concern is just if the criteria is not a COVID-19 positive test, it does potentially create issues for us of just, you know, making sure we can fully staff a department. I think fr- fr- from, from our standpoint, you know, we, we kind of had that back and forth. Obviously EMS adopted their policy. I wasn't consulted as part of that. I know Patrick and I had a conversation on a Sunday afternoon about it. And I explained to Patrick Anderson that I had concerns and asked him to go back to the commission and express those concerns based upon the city's negotiations with, with the fire department. And obviously the, they decided to move forward with the policy as is, but I wasn't involved in, in those conversations. I think kind of how we left at 72 was we made some additional concessions on those four criteria that is different than the, the police department. You know, we're, we're trying to keep this as consistent as possible across departments just for kind of the conversations we're having tonight. But then also, I guess the big issue here is making sure we can fully staff these departments. We, we kind of settled at 72 because one, we gave those additional criteria that was not made available to the police department. And second, Fitchburg is currently at 72 hours with their firefighters. Um, so we're consistent with, with Fitchburg. You know, I, I think just big picture from a staff standpoint, I just want to just point this out to the council. And we had a lot of department heads on here tonight. I know a couple probably aren't too happy with other policies we've put in place as well. I just, we'll just want to caution the council in general, if every time somebody has a concern with a policy or what we've done here, I just, there's a few other ones out there. We just need to be very careful that you, you trust your staff to kind of go out and negotiate these items. But we just need to be very cautious that every time there's a, there's a disagreement that, you know, Luke and I are working on this, and obviously Ted sent out a, an email to the entire council laying out, out his views, and he's very right to do that. But the challenge that we have is ultimately, you know, we're here as department has to help try to manage this as well, too. And I just caution, big picture wise, that we just need to make sure that if we're making decisions, that they're sound decisions, not because someone is kind of in essence going over my head or Luke's head. I'm just, I just want to point that out as the concern I have as the administrator and concern for my staff to manage their departments. We just need to be very cautious of that, of what decisions we're making and trusting your department has to negotiate this. Because like I said, we went back and forth two or three times on this, and now here we are tonight and we still have issues. It's just makes our jobs as department, it's challenging. So I think our offer at, with the four criteria, which is not made available to the police department, I think our 72 hours is, is sufficient. You know, the, the police had some comments on it, but they, they took the offer we initially made to them. Uh, that offer was the 80 hours and actually had a, which we thought was very kind and it would hopefully reduce any potential for abuse was the 40 hours of that time, if it was left over, it could be banked into their sick time. And the thought being is it would potentially cut down on concerns of someone calling in for some reason. So, uh, that's why we put that caveat in there. And obviously the, the, the fire department union didn't want that. But, um, you know, I think, I think we made some pretty good efforts to try to make it, meet, meet the ground here, meet, you know, get some good language here and, um, you know, staff is still comfortable with the 72 hours and the criteria we have in the policy. But that, that's kind of how it came to be. This evolved over about a week, 10-day period.
Adam, thank you very much. I, um, I find it fascinating. I'm hearing comparisons to the police department, but yet they're not comparing actually all the right details, just cherry picking what they want. My position right now is to trust the city and, and their, and their attempt to try to make things as equal and fair across the departments. I think when you have one department trying to pick their favorite pieces out of something, it's not fair to others. And I think it's appropriate for the city to try to be fair across the board. I think if we aren't being fair, I'm sure we will hear that as well. But knowing the big picture, I think is really important. I appreciate you trying to deliver that.
Alder Cole and then Alder Kemp.
To, have you heard, does, um, you know, Acting Chief Mahatma think that there will be a staffing issue? Cause I haven't heard, I mean, I don't, I mean, it, I guess I'm just having a hard time, like, I know, I want everything to be staff. This is public safety issue. We need to worry about that. But it isn't just necessarily the firefighters that we have to worry about, too. It's their family members, you know? And then like the fire, like the firefighter could get it, like if the family member gets it, then they could get it. It could just cause a lot of, you know, time off issues. I would just, I mean, and I mean, and, and Dan did mention that he's already got a lot of things in place as far as like, you know, working with other departments, uh, mutual aid kind of things. So I just don't know if you'd heard anything, is, is he have an issue with, um, like he thinks there's going to be a staffing problem if we, you know, go in the other direction?
I don't think so. I think that's you, Katie. I'll meet you. I don't, I don't think so. Um, so I'm not aware of that. And there's still sick time and everyone, every full-time employee has sick time available to them. So that's the benefit the city provides as well, and that would still be available for them, too, if there was an issue. So I think the challenge you run into is this, this is above and beyond what is normally for sick time that's allowed. So across the board, regardless of the, the department, you run a higher risk of that being abused, whether it's in police, fire, or wherever it might be. It could be any, it could be public works. It could be, you know, administration. It could be anywhere, just because this is time that is been made available by the federal government, and there's broad criteria of how it can be used. But I, I don't think there's a specific reason there. Does it across the board increase that risk? Yes, I, I do. I do think any, any department that it increases the risk that it could be potentially abused.
Um, I'm going to call on Alder Kemp, then Alder Posey, and then back to Alder Cole. Uh, Alder Kemp?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do have a, a couple of concerns. Because I, you know, I want to be fair to all of the, um, individuals that work to, um, serve and protect the city, especially in a, in a time like this. But I also want to make sure that what we're doing is fair across the board. And so I'm failing to make the connection and, and make, make the, I'm just, the difference between one department getting 80 and another getting 72 and us calling it fair. I'm not describing how I'm thinking about this right now. I just maybe need someone else to explain that differently.
Uh, was that a question to Mr. Sayer or?
Yeah, yeah, to Mr., to Mr. Sayer. I mean, like, if the, if the police department settled at 80 and the fire department's at 72, how, how are we calling it fair?
Uh, Mr. Sayer?
You gotta unmute, Adam.
Oh, madam, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. Okay. So if you look at the police department over a two, kind of a two-period cycle of how their hours are, they potentially could come up to 96 as well. I mean, I think we were just trying to look at from the standpoint of, you know, you know, if we have, with the police department, we had two criteria, and both those criteria were a positive COVID test. And then we expanded that criteria based upon what, what Fitch, Verona EMS approved to include, includes four criteria that were significantly broader than that. I think the challenge we run into is is we, 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 we had a pretty good agreement in place and understanding that obviously didn't get approved. But now we have something with the police department and that we think is sufficient to kind of work for them, you know, does it, does it fully cover their time? Most likely it will cover their time. Will it cover the, the fire department? You know, you might be a day short potentially. But it all depends on how you start counting the days. It all depends on the criteria from the CDC as well, too. I mean, the ra- the reality is, the reality is, quite honestly, is we, the approach we took with both the police department and the fire department was we didn't have to give them anything. And we made an attempt here to be proactive and try and, because no, just, we had concerns of not providing anything because they are the first responders and, and very important employees. Some communities have not given anything to their employees in, in Dane County. But I, you know, part of this too is it, it's, it's intent, it's not intended to really be a give and take. It's intended to be, we're offering something that we're not obligated to offer. Obviously, the council can do what they want, but you know, I, I think what we have in place here is, is pretty solid.
Uh, if I might briefly expand on that, I guess the bigger thing is that the, uh, fire department would have, or the firefighters would have broader criteria to use the leave, and the police department would have more limited. So it's kind of a trade-off between, do you want limited and limited criteria more hours or broader criteria and fewer hours? I mean, I thi- I think it's, it's a tough question, uh, uh, for me, because we, like Adam has said, we want to balance out what other departments get and what, what other people get, um, while still keeping, keeping things fully staffed. But I mean, I know other communities haven't given first responders anything, but I also, I also think that's wrong. And, and people, you know, if I ask people, put their, put, put themselves on the line, uh, for the job, they should, they should get something, you know? Regardless of what we have to do. Um, but I have Alder Posey and then Alder Cole.
Thank you. Uh, so my, and I don't know if it's a question or more comment, but around the two weeks timeframe really has to do with disease transmission from what I've been hearing everywhere. Is that that's the period that you have to home in order to know if you are going to develop. Now with testing and hearing that our, you know, first responders have access to testing, I might, I hope I'm correct in what I heard earlier. Is that going to impact this? And I guess I'm looking at it from more of the, I don't want to encourage somebody to come back sooner because they need to get that pay in because their spouse or partner has been laid off and not dip into time off. So trying to find a good balance there. And had, was that addressed in that negotiation discussion, that two-week timeframe versus necessarily hours paid? But two-week of disease transmission timeframe?
Mr. Sayer?
I, I think the concern at the time was just getting a COVID test. I think the concern is probably also there if it's not, if it's a spouse or a dependent of the person, because they technically probably aren't in that higher criteria range as versus a first responder. So was, was it, was it addressed? I don't, I don't think it was fully addressed. I think how we kind of addressed it was they have other leave balances, but I know you said you prefer them not to use that. But that, that's a, that's a benefit that's provided to the city employees as well, from our standpoint, that we have a lot of employees right now tapping into because their kids are off of school or for whatever reasons as well, too. So we're, we're trying to balance this across the board as well, too.
I have, uh, Alder Cole and Alder Journey.
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment as far as, um, you know, the wondering about like abusing the policy. And I just think we need to be careful with our language around, um, saying somebody would abuse the policy because I, I think, um, you know, I'm a public employee, you know, even outside of this. And, um, it, it feels bad to feel like you're not trusted, um, to do your job and to show up and to do what you're supposed to. And so, I mean, I, I would prefer to trust the, you know, our, you know, public servants and trust that our supervisors, that they're doing a good job and making sure people aren't abusing it. I just, I, I, I think I want to be careful using a language around saying that we're afraid people will abuse it because I think that could create like morale issues, saying, well, they don't trust us, though. And I, and I, I personally just don't think that they, people would abuse this because I think first responders at this point are all assuming at some point they're going to get this because they're out there, they're facing the public, they're coming into contact with people. And so they know they're going to need this leave eventually. And so I, I don't think that people are going to take advantage of this. I mean, I would hope not just because of the pure fact that they probably are assuming that they're going to get it at some point and they're going to need to leave.
Alder Journey.
So when we're talking about the criteria, um, so the city of Verona had two criteria. The, uh, positive coro- COVID test, and then what was the other criteria?
Uh, Mr. Sayer?
So for the police department, we have the employee test positive for COVID-19. Or number two, the employee is carrying for a member of the immediate family living in the household who has tested positive for COVID-19.
Okay. And then for the, uh, for, for criteria coming out of the fire department, so that would be the, um, the positive, um, employee test and then family. Is that, would that also be included in that four criteria there?
So then the, the four criteria is the employee is subject to a federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation order related to COVID-19. Two, the employee has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine because of COVID-19. Three, the employee is experiencing symptoms of COVID-19 and is seeking a medical diagnosis. Or four, the employee is carrying for a family member subject as defined in the bereavement policy in the collective argument agreement or employee handbook as applicable, or advised to quarantine or isolation.
Okay. Because, because the one proposal is the city proposal, and then the other proposal is specifically, uh, for a, um, overall fire department. Was that coming out of a, a union negotiation, or where was that coming from?
So the one that's in the packet, that's later, that's dated 4/6/2020 and labeled draft. The police department one is, is the same that was approved by the, the police department staff. Uh, the fire department one is what the firefighter union has approved, except this one has 72 hours instead of 96 hours. That's the only difference.
Yeah. Is there any way to, um, move up the fire, um, firefighters to 80, 80 hours along with the police department for the city of Verona?
Uh, that would be at the discretion of, of the council. So, you know, there could be a motion, there could be an amendment to the motion. Um, that's kind of up to, uh, how the council wants to do it.
Cause it, it almost sounds if, if other communities are not putting this out, Verona was proactive in doing this. And so, um, I'm, I'm just looking at it now within the confines of what the city is offering as opposed to another outside source kind of thing. Did I make my, did I finish my statement or?
Was that a question or is that just an ending?
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm with to vote. If I were to vote, I would vote, you know, um, the, the city's, um, proposal, but move the fire department up to 80 hours.
Okay. I have, uh, Alder Touche, then Alder Cronin, then Alder Kemp. Alder Touche.
Thank you. Um, so the hours, I think that's a great question. Adam, do you know, um, that, so I, I think of a full-time person, I always, you know, dealing with staff. I think full-time is 2080. I don't know what calculator, uh, 2080 hours that is. What calculator does city uses to, uh, measure full-time? Do you know police versus fire? I mean, if we're trying to do apples, apples, I'd really think it's important. Police versus fire? I mean, if we're trying to do apples, apples, I'd really think it's important for us to know. You know, if a full-time policeman is two thousand eighty hours and a full-time firefighter is two thousand eighty hours, then. Eighty hours of time off for this makes sense. That's one question after you, and I have something else after that answer.
Yeah, I I don't, quite honestly, I don't have an answer in front of me, so that's something we'd have to look into what the criteria is. I know for the police department. Over a two-cycle period, uh, including off days, it does come out to closer than ninety-six as well. So it depends on how you calculate it, but if you look at overall hours, that's something we'd have to pull and take a, take a closer look at.
Okay. You know, and it and it's it's interesting. I think I think what the city's trying to offer is fantastic, actually, because. You know, I'm in the private sector and I get my sick time. Our PTO, which is a combination of sick and and vacation time. And I get the new enhanced FMLA. That's it. So I think what the city's doing is fantastic. I I definitely appreciate it for our first responders and frontline people. You know, I think about, you know, people working in grocery stores and and all these essential people that. I would be very surprised if they get extra pay when they get sick and whether it's through COVID or. The flu or whatever comes up. You know, I think getting something when a lot of people aren't getting anything is fantastic, so. Adam, I I appreciate what you're doing and what you're doing for the city. I think it's imperative that we try to treat everyone fairly. And equally, you know, I think when we've got different min- uh groups, organizations trying to take extra advantages, trying to get. One step above someone else. I mean, would you like to be a police officer and all of a sudden the fire department's trying to get ten extra things that they don't get? It's not very fair at all, so. Let's try to keep everything on a level playing field, please.
Uh, I have Alder Cronin and Alder Camp.
So I would agree that keeping things on a level playing field is important, and in that sense. The fact that the Verona firefighters are sharing the space with. Uh, Fitch-Rona EMS and are scheduled the same with forty-eight hours. That the request to add twenty-four more hours, I don't think is unreasonable. I don't think it's gonna be abused. Um, I think it would go a long way uh into helping us with other negotiations. And I would be interested in understanding what would need to happen to amend the current motion. Uh, to increase the hours to ninety-six.
Um, uh, before I call on Alder Kemp to jump in with the uh parliamentary procedures, so. Um, someone can make a motion to accept it and try to change. Uh, uh, the thing in their motion, or somebody can make a motion as it's written, and then someone can move in an amendment. Um, and say, you know, I I, you know, a movie amended to eighty hours, ninety-six hours. Whatever, whatever people want, um, but it it could be made as part of the original motion, or it could be an amendment, depending on who makes a motion. Does that answer your question, Alder Cronin?
Yes.
Uh, Alder Camp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, one question I have um for for Adam. I do think that that uh our first responders should be, you know, have the same. Opportunity to have sick leave. The only, the only issue that I'm having right now, or at least the same amount of of hours. Available to them. The issue that I'm having. Is the eligibility reasons and the extras that the fire department would have compared to the other departments. So, because I, like, I don't want to have this constant one-upping, right? So let me ask you this, have we, have you gotten any blowback from any of the of the other departments at this time? Related to these additional, you know, numbers one and two on their draft?
Uh, Mr. Sayer.
Oh, the 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 one and two.
That's for Adam.
Yeah, uh, for 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 one and two, that's, you know, what what we had offered, the fire department initially had the criteria one and two. And it had that ninety-six hours in it.
Okay, yeah.
We had basically the same offer to them that was approved by the police department. That was not acceptable for them. I, you know, when they added those additional criteria, that's when. That's when it got broadened to how it could be used, you know, when, when we had that agreement on, it had to be a positive COVID test that was consistent with the police department. That was consistent with. You know, measurable criteria that's out there for a specific COVID nineteen case. Um, you know, as Patrick Anderson said, there's a lot of flu going around. We've seen a lot of flu across the board, but. That was kind of our parody of, okay, we're trying to keep this as consistent as possible. And that was our proposal, and they 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 obviously had concerns with that, and that's why there is that counterproposal with those four criteria instead. Does that help?
Yeah, it does, but I mean, this could just lead to, you know, departments constantly going back and forth on these kinds of things. That's that's my concern. I have no problem with making sure that everyone is paid the same amount of hours. Should they end up in a situation like this. I had a very close family member with COVID, so I I understand what that could be like. I'm just a little concerned about the the additional. Points in there and what that could mean in the future, um, should we have to go through something like this again, you know, God forbid, of course.
Um, I saw a hand up by Alder Journey, um, but it's down, uh, Alder Journey and then Alder Cole.
If we were to vote on this um resolution as it currently exists. Then the fire department would be excluded. In that resolution?
Uh, Mr. Sayer.
Correct, so I mean, if you voted on it, how it currently exists, I mean, you could. So anything that we apply to the fire department has to be ratified or approved by their union, so any benefit in there. You would, they would have to sign off on, so the council could choose to do. Whether it's eighty, seventy-two, ninety-six, regardless of what it is, they'd have to sign off on it and approve it. Um, as of right now, what was put in the draft was just for the police department, but. The co- as as Mayor Diaz said, you can tack on any type of amendment you you would like. You could tack on the. Fire department amendment as drafted in the packet, except you want to modify the hours to be X. Um, and then they ultimately, the fire union have to ratify or approve. Whatever action you guys do. If they don't approve it, then then it doesn't become available to them.
That's uh, that's. That's not fair either. So. Yeah. So it's a matter of, you know, which way to go with the fire department then. Way it looks.
Uh, anything further, uh, Alder Journey?
Not at this point, no.
Uh, I have Alder Cole and then Alder Touche.
Um, I think I just wanted to address Alder Touche earlier, was asking about them hours, and I believe the police. Department works thirty-seven hour weeks. And the fire department works forty-eight hour weeks. I know it depends on how some of the shift work works out, but in general, I believe. So if like, if, I know if we went to, I know Alder Journey had um talked about going to eighty hours, that still wouldn't cover, like. Four working days essentially for them, since they do work forty-eight hour shifts. So it seems, I mean, eighty seems like it would be like, you know, equal to. Police department, but really as far as how their ships work, it's a little bit different.
Uh, Alder Touche.
Um, I would like to make a motion to amend the um. Uh, do we, do we have an original motion to start this? Because I think I can't do that until we have an original motion, correct?
Right.
Alright, so here's my idea. I think we go to the fire apartment with a, sorry, my dog's trying to burst into my room. I I think, I almost feel like we need to go back to the drawing board, board with the fire department. Given an offer we approve, I I'm totally comfortable with eighty hours and what we've offered the police. I think testing positive for the test is important because. You know, a- as was said earlier, you can have the flu, you can have a cold, you can have various things going on. If we are allotting this special sick time for COVID, it needs to be for COVID. Um, testing positive seems super appropriate. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask for that. Tests are becoming more widely available. Um, so in my opinion, I would like to amend the offer for the fire department. To match what we've done for the police, eighty hours with the same criteria, so that we're treating everyone equally.
Okay, so uh, uh, if I have that correctly, I have a motion. To approve the offer is written, except the, to extend towards the firefighters eighty hours. And change the the criteria to match what the police department has.
Yes, exactly that.
Okay, motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
I'll second that.
Uh, I think Alder Camp was first. Um, motion before the body, uh, anything to add, Alder Touche?
Nothing.
Um, I have a hand raised for Alder Journey and then Alder Cole. Uh, I think.
I'm sorry, I think I, I, if that was a mistake to have my hand up or I never took it down.
Okay, um, Alder Cole.
I would um like to say that there are um all the other municipalities um in Dane County that. Have fire, you know, agreements with um the union have. Um, decided to forego the positive testing result specifically because. It's. Um, and we don't have, they don't have a lot of access to tests. I know first responders. Are supposed to have more access to tests, um, but their family members don't. Um, and the the problem is, is say a firefighter's, you know, wife or kid is at home and they are having COVID-like symptoms. And they, um, they can't get access to a test, so now this firefighter could have been exposed, doesn't know. And now we're saying, well, you have to go to work because you don't have a positive test result. Um, I, and then we have the potential to spread that around the entire fire department and get the EMS. Uh, workers sick as well. Um, the EMS doesn't have to have a positive test result, and no other fire department that's represented by the union does. Um, I personally. I don't think that the positive test result should be required. I think we should follow the CDC guidelines. The CDC guidelines say, if you have COVID-like symptoms, you're supposed to stay home. It doesn't say that you have to have a positive test result. I think we need to be up like on the safe side here, follow what the CDC guidelines are saying. And not spread this around, because then we are gonna have a staffing issue if everybody in the fire department gets COVID because we're requiring a positive test result. That's just my thought.
Um, motion before the body, um, questions, comments on the motion? While people think of whether they want to comment or not, I just wanted to add one quick thing. I'm not. Uh, uh, really that worried about abuse or anything like that. I think, you know, that there's there's trade-offs with benefits. And, you know, benefits might be more flexible, you might get less of them, or you might get more of them, and they're less flexible. I don't. It's not that I don't trust any firefighters, and, you know, I mean, we've been involved in negotiations with the firefighters union, and, you know, frankly, I think they deserve to be paid more money. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want anyone to feel like they weren't appreciated, um, but I, uh, 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 if. So I I just wanted to make that clear. Any other uh questions or comments on the uh motion by Alder Touche? Seeing no hands raised. Um, we will have the clerk read the roll um in regards to the motion as read by Alder Touche. Uh, clerk clerked.
Alder Ricky.
Aye.
Alder Touche.
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
No.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
No.
Alder Posey?
No.
Uh, just to double check with the clerk, I have four, uh, I and three no.
Correct.
Okay, so uh, that motion passes, um, and the agreement will go back uh to the firefighters' union. Um, I do, I do want to say, I mean, I I would have to consult with Mr. Sayer and then eventually the council as well, but I I would think. Um, I don't, I don't necessarily know if the firefighters' union uh would accept this or not. Um, I I kind of hope they would, but I mean, e- even if if negotiations are ongoing and someone were, God forbid, to get COVID or something, I think we'd want. To backdate this or or make sure that the people were protected, you know, regardless of whether we have an agreement in place, because we wouldn't want. You know, we wouldn't want to say, well, you you know, you fell in this weird gray period and you don't, you don't get benefits. We don't, we don't, we don't want that. Um, but just to make that clear as well. With that, we will move on to uh ten F. Which is a discussion impossible action regarding ordinance number two zero dash nine six four. Amending section eleven dash one dash one of the code of ordinances related to violations of law relating to health. Uh, Mr. Sayer.
Uh, thank you. The proposed ordinance amendment would adopt violations of state statute two fifty-two twenty-five. As a violation of law relating to health. The governor's safer-at-home order is an order issued by state statute two fifty-two twenty-five. Currently, the city's municipal code of ordinances does not adopt state statute two fifty-two twenty-five as an offense. And could make city enforcement of the governor's safer-at-home order more difficult. Proposed ordinance amendment will make it clear, the city can enforce the governor's safer-at-home order. The city attorney has drafted the proposed ordinance amendment, and staff recommends approval of the amendment.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments, uh, uh, or motions? Uh, Alder Camp.
I want to make a motion, uh, um, asking the council to adopt ordinance number. Two zero nine six four amending section eleven dash one dash one of the code of ordinances relating to violations of law relating to health.
Uh, motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second? Uh, second by Alder Touche. Uh, anything to add, Alder Kemp?
Nothing further.
Alright, uh, motion before the body. Uh, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. Uh, we will read the roll regarding ordinance number two zero dash nine six four. Amending section eleven dash one dash one of the code of ordinances related to violations of law related to health. Uh, the clerk would read the roll.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp? Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Uh, and that motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to item ten G, discussion impossible action regarding the approval of operator licenses. Uh, clerk clerk.
Thank you, if I could get a motion, please, to approve operator licenses application presented by the city clerk.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Second by Alder, Alder Ricky, uh, and I'm very sorry, but we will read the roll for this, as I said at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, clerk clerk.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Uh, we're on item eleven adjournment.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I think it was second by Alder Ricky. It was, it was close. It was close between Chad and and Heather. Um, and this was the one I did say we do by a voice vote, so uh, all those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. And then motion carries, and we are adjourned at nine twenty-eight PM. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
Aye.
Thank you.